Good evening and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. There are agendas available on the table near the entrance or online on the city's website. Consent agenda items are routine items which are voted on in one motion and vote. Any unfinished business or new business items are voted on separately. Councillors will be given an opportunity for questions or comments, followed by citizens who must speak at the podium and identify themselves. Citizens will be allowed to speak one time per agenda item for up to three minutes. Citizens who do wish to speak on a topic that does not appear on tonight's agenda will have the opportunity to do so during the public comment section of the agenda for up to three minutes. With that, I do want to say that we're going to go into executive session just really briefly. So at this point, I would like to entertain a motion to move into executive session for abatements 02 and 03, 2025, 1 MRS 4056F, please.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Folks, we'll be right back. Okay, can I entertain a motion to please come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Wonderful. All right, moving on to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any councils have any conflict of interest of any of the votes that they'll take this evening? Seeing none, Cornell, let's go into the manager's report, please.
In-person absentee voting continues Monday through Thursday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, right here in the annex, right on in the lobby, and will go to Thursday, October 30th. Two hundred and thirty-four have voted in-person absentee, and there have been six hundred and sixty-nine absentee ballots requested, of which three hundred and fifty-one have been returned. Fire Department had a successful open house on Saturday. Over three hundred attended the event with open house tours, smoke trailer hose demonstrations, and free smoke detectors, and blood pressure checks. Nightmare on Main Street will be Saturday, October 25th. Main Street will be closed off at 3:00 PM. Pumpkin carving starts at four, trunk or treat at five, and lots of other activities. Just go to the city's website for more information. The Fourth Annual Quarry Road Trail Fest is Sunday, October 26th. It's a day of activities, festivities, and trail running races at the Quarry Road Trails, featuring a 5K community trail race and a 15K challenge trail race. And new this year is a free kids' fun run, and that is the day of the registration only. Costumes are highly encouraged for all racers. More info at quarryroad.org. Friends of the Quarry Road Fall Festival is a free event on November 1st from 12:00 to 3:00. There'll be free kids' activities, including apple slinging, face painting, scavenger hunt, pumpkin bowling, and a hike bike parade. And while at Quarry Road, the construction update is paving should start this week on the road and parking areas. Sewer water and electrical and drainage pipes have been installed. The previous grassed parking area is up to grade, and the contractor will begin installing the plastic paving reinforcing this week, as well as the sandy loamy fill for the grassed area. Sightlighting conduit and light pole bases are complete and ready to be wired. Final drainage piping will be installed this week. Contractor will be loaming and hydro seeding over the next few weeks. And City Hall parking lot construction will start next week. In addition to paving, there will be concrete work around the front steps to match the previous sidewalk work done next to Castangue Square. So parking will be impacted over the next couple of weeks.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to councillor comments or committee reports. Any councillors have any comments that they would like to make this evening? Seeing none, I will turn it over to our youth council for an update from them. If you guys want to introduce yourselves and...
I'm Elias Carter. I'm a sophomore.
I'm Maddie. I'm also a sophomore.
Yesterday was our meeting yesterday, and we had, we discussed the trunk or treat that will be happening on Saturday on Main Street from 5:00 to 7:00. We decided that our theme will be a shark theme for our float. We'll have lots of goods, such as Swedish fish, and we are getting our Instagram started up to create more of a community outreach, and we're probably going to post something about, you know, about ourselves, or what our goals will be, or something like that, you know?
We were also talking about possible ways to get the public in Waterville, like, informed about dark sky projects. We were thinking about a possible dark sky ordinance, or maybe like spreading some awareness about Dark Sky Week, which is on May 2nd. So yeah, we were also talking about that.
Yeah, excellent.
What was the impetus for your conversation about this dark skies? Why, just talk about that a little more if you would.
We talked about like a possible ordinance that could help like dim the lights, especially in like the streetlights downtown, maybe make them hooded. I know a couple other people were talking about having it so that some like businesses or restaurants would have to turn their lights off at a certain time, or like dim their lights at a certain time. And also spreading awareness of the negative effects that bright lighting would have on our environment. It could possibly like steer away animals migrating, and they would pollute our skies, which is also really bad.
Great job. Okay, any other councillors or anything?
Quick question. How can we further pursue this ordinance and help them with that?
Well, this is part of their project all year. So I think, so last night, we really started to kind of dive into it and really create the outline as to what steps, how we're going to, you know, follow and things like that. I will say that probably all of you, or a lot of you, will probably be called on for advice and soundboarding and things of that nature as we go through, as along, you know, with city staff. I know we start talking about streetlights, and that's like, whoa, wait, whoa. So yes, but we, so yeah, well, this is kind of the vision for the year, like this is our project for the year, and so we're going to walk through it and really hope to start promoting it, because I know that there is something that the state adopted, and there's a couple of weeks a year, so we're going to try to raise awareness to that. I believe it's the second week of May is the one, I think we just had one in September, but we're really going to be out communicating, you know, that and those effects. So we're just starting to peel back the onion on this, I would say, so yeah.
I will share that NOAA has really pretty trashed data for light pollution in the city of Waterville, but in, with the help of the police station when we were working with the brown-tailed moth problem, we generated a really nice light pollution map for the city. So we have very high-quality data. If the group would like, I'd be happy to share all that.
Please, thank you. That would be awesome. Okay, I do want to just provide an update. We did have an initial meeting with the Nature and Conservancy with regard to the Kennebec River Dams. It was myself, Bill Lee, our city solicitor, and Sarah Cross, our executive support specialist. We met with them on October 2nd with regard to the recent, their recent acquisition of the four dams along the Kennebec River, the Lockwood, the Hydro, Kennebec, the Shamet, and the Western. Their long-term vision is to restore as much of the river to free-flowing state as possible, with a strong emphasis on balancing ecological restoration and community benefits. This will be a multi-year process with no immediate changes expected. The Nature, the TNC, is actively engaging with local communities to ensure that outcomes support both people and nature. Importantly, there are no impact on municipal tax revenues for several years. The TNC has worked, is working closely with municipalities to maintain revenue stability throughout the transition. For Waterville, the focus is on the Lockwood and Hydro Kennebec Dams. The city currently receives about $250,000 in tax revenue from these two facilities, with the Lockwood being the larger contributor. The Hydro Kennebec Dam is geographically split between Waterville and Winslow, but the majority of that tax revenue is allotted to Winslow. Over the next year, ownership of the dam will be transferred to a newly-formed Kennebec River Restoration Trust, an independent nonprofit that will oversee the restoration and the redevelopment efforts during this period. Brookfield will continue to operate the dam safely under contract with the KART. It's important to note that all four dams are run-of-river facilities, meaning they pass through the same volume of the water flows through them naturally. As a result, water levels will remain relatively stable even after the dam's removal to visualize the future river conditions. One can look directly below the existing dam where the river already flows freely. This is a representative of what the river will look like post-removal. The TNC is currently working on, sorry, the TNC just finished a pamphlet, which is, I have put some out by the entrance, there will be, some of these will be at City Hall, both in administration and in the clerk's office tomorrow, and we are working on creating a website to put this on. Once that becomes available, it'll be updated there as well. So that is the update that I have with regard to the lower Kennebec Dams. So, excellent. Moving on to public comment. Anybody in the public wish to make a comment, a public comment at this time? Patty, anyone online? Okay, seeing none, I will at this point entertain a motion for the passage of the consent agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
He's in agreement. All right, all those in favor? All right, thank you very much. Can I make, entertain a motion to read by title only, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Wonderful. All right, moving on to old business, Resolution 191, 2025.
Approve poverty abatement number 2-2025.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right.
So, do you want to speak to this?
No, please, go ahead.
Okay, so we had this request for poverty abatement from taxes, and this particular individual happens to qualify for the Haynes Fund, which is a charity supporting women and children in poverty. So fortunately, that is a great solution, rather than passing on any, you know, foregoing those taxes. They will be covered by the Haynes Charity Trust, and also this family will get some relief as well. So for that reason, I'll move to table this indefinitely.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, thank you very much.
And I'll just, oh, do you want to put in a plug for the Haynes Charity Trust? I was going to add that.
Please do. This is what I was going to ask you to do.
Right. I mean, this is a fund whose purpose is to support people who are struggling, and it is underutilized, so just want to make sure that everyone knows about this. If families are struggling, and it is intended for women with children, I believe. So anyway, I just want to flag that and encourage anyone who might be listening or knows someone who might be able to take advantage of this resource. It's there for this purpose, and we want it to get to those who need it. Thank you.
And council chair, how might someone avail themselves of this fund?
That is a good question.
Well, right now, there's no application online to, but there is information about the charity online, so you can see on that.
And would someone perhaps go to Denise here in the city to get information? What would be a good municipal conduit?
At this point right now, that is, that is the first step, yeah, would be to go to, there isn't a paper application at this point. We are working to get that online to make it easier, but yes, right now it is going to go through GA. You good?
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to Order 193, 2025.
Acceptance of Department of Public Safety Grant.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Gilli?
Yes.
Councillor De Brito?
Yes.
Councillor Klepak?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Krigbaum?
Yes.
Councillor Beal?
Yes.
Councillor Harard?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to ordinance 194, 2025.
Adoption of the 2025 City of Waterville Comprehensive Plan.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, can I, Patty, can I get a roll call, please?
Councillor Gilli?
Yes.
Councillor De Brito?
Yes.
Councillor Klepak?
Been a long time coming. Let's get it done. Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Krigbaum?
Yes.
Councillor Beal?
Yes.
Councillor Harard?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor and zero opposed.
All right, moving on to Resolution 196, 2025.
Approve poverty abatement number 03-2025.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. We are...
So we have, we have a same situation here. Fortunately, this second family requesting a poverty abatement also qualifies for the Haynes Fund, so I will move that we also table this indefinitely. There will not be a need to abate taxes, but instead, that fund will cover.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Thank you very much. Resolution 197, 2025.
Refer to the Planning Board Zoning Map Amendment, 25 Elm Street.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Devin, good evening, sir. Would you like to come up and just?
Sure.
Yeah.
All right, it's my first time here, so I'll figure this out.
It's okay, you're fine. Basically, what, you just give a high-level overview of why you're asking this, the council to send this to the planning board for review. So it's pretty simple.
So I originally bought this property about three months ago. As a lot of you guys probably know, the property's been sitting there for a long time, unused. I'm turning the brick building into a laundromat, and the plan was to have the garage building to stay as a garage. It already has five bays, has a lift, air compressor, conveyor belt, everything, storage. But I guess the past owner that owned it never continued the grandfather, from what I was told, so as of right now, I'm not allowed to lease it out to anybody. So I'm just kind of stuck in the air with that one at the moment, so I'm just hoping that it can be approved so I can turn that back into a garage, and I feel like that will be very beneficial to the community, as well as having the laundromat next door. It'll be a very family-oriented one as well. Once that is built, it's going to have very good service, going to have the best washer machines you can have as well, so I'm taking care of the property heavily. On the right side, I plan to, it's going to be a behavioral specialist in there, and I'm going to have a possible salon going in there as well. So I really want to revamp the whole Elm, the Elm Street as now. I know a lot of stuff's been under construction, hasn't been worked on for a while, so I would like to be the one to kind of start that process and get all of it going.
Awesome. I think that's great. Thank you very much.
Of course.
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, all those in favor? All right.
Love to see it.
Next up, you'll go to the planning board, and they'll send you the information as to when that meeting will be, and you can show up for that.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Devin. Very nice to meet you. Okay, moving on to Resolution 198, 2025.
Authorizing the reallocation of funds from the airport capital project for HVAC system to the installation of a new furnace in the airport hangar.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, any discussion with this? Looks like we're moving 50,000 over. Okay. Yes.
I guess my one question is, what happens to the cooling part of this project?
I think they'll have to fund it next year.
Get pushed out to another year.
The prices came in much higher than projected.
Okay.
Any other comments or concerns, questions? Okay, with that, all those in favor? All right, thank you very much. Moving on to Resolution 199, 2025.
Approve bid award to Hools Plumbing Heating and Air Conditioning to install a new furnace in the Waterville Regional Airport's terminal building in the hangar portion.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Cornell.
Yes, so when Andy, the city engineer, was reviewing the technical bids, he found on the back of one of the pages an alternate bid that they did not know about till after he had written the agenda item. So he's asking to indefinitely postpone this so they can vet the bid and make sure it meets the specs, and then come back with a new resolution for your consideration at the next meeting.
I'll motion to table indefinitely.
I'll second.
All those in favor? All right, thank you very much. Moving on to Resolution 200, 2025.
Accept the Alpine fee schedule at Quarry Road Trails for the 2025-2026 season.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right, thank you. Jeff, you here this evening?
Yeah, sure. So yeah, we got a lot of really exciting stuff going on at Quarry Road, and in addition to all the infrastructure that's going in, we've got some exciting additions coming to the Roto Ski Hill for the fifth year of our operation out there. So this is for downhill skiing and snowboarding. So we're looking at expanding from 75 vertical feet to 150. In addition to that, we're moving away from these diesel light towers that we've rented in the past to fixed LED lights, so that's a really important and great upgrade for us there. And so this fee schedule adjustment that's proposed here really kind of brings our pricing scheme online and in line with what we have for Nordic skiing, which has been a really successful model for us. So the fees for Waterville residents actually don't change that much, but this is an increase to day fees, as well as season pass fees for non-residents primarily. And overall, if demand stays static for the hill, this would lead to about a $1,000 to $2,000 increase in our revenue, which is less than 1% total for our operating revenue. So it's actually a pretty small change, but we're experiencing a lot of growth and excitement for downhill skiing there, so it's important to get in front of that and make the appropriate changes to our fee schedule. So happy to answer any questions you have about it.
I mean, the Quarry, I mean, this is an incredible, you know, service for the city of Waterville. What's your, like, advertising? Do you have anything on Facebook, any social media posts, anything to market this incredible, you know, gem for the city of Waterville?
Working on it, yeah. We've got, obviously, our Facebook, you know, Facebook, Instagram. We've got a great website, quarryroad.org. If you've never poked around that website, definitely check it out. We also distribute these flyers, trail maps throughout, you know, locally, as well as try to get those a little further afield. We do pretty minimal level of advertising outside of the region, but, you know, to be perfectly honest, we're experiencing a lot of people traveling further and further away to utilize the park, and that's great for us, you know, so people coming from as far away as Portland for the day, and even further sometimes to, you know, get on snow. And it's, it's much more affordable than a lot of these other Alpine areas, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
Jeff, last year was the first year you were able to offer a Nordic high school team for Waterville. That was great. Do you anticipate being able to do that for downhill Alpine as well at some point?
I don't know. You know, that's separate from the Quarry Road operation, what we do with Waterville Parks and Rec, and it's great that the area grew and the programs grew to be able to, you know, sustain that and support that. I think, yeah, if we continue the trajectory, but I think that's still a while, a ways out, you know? Right now, there's a whole generation of kids that are learning to ski there. They're not at the point where they're competing. We don't have any competitive programs for downhill skiing or snowboarding. We have a really great volunteer-led program for learn, learning to downhill ski, learning to snowboard, fully volunteer-staffed, and, you know, so they got to learn to, you know, the basics before they start competing. So we're not there yet, and I don't anticipate us being there for a while, but we could get there, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I would imagine that that's predicated upon, it's what, 325 feet of vertical on the mountain altogether?
It's about 270. So this, yeah, so 150 feet is, we'll be just under halfway up the historic run of the ski hill there.
Yeah, yeah. So getting that summit is going to be, it's a goal, I guess.
Well, I think this is a really good next step, and we'll see from there, but yeah, so. Yeah, it's great that there's so much energy behind it, so.
Yeah, and so could you just talk a little bit about opportunities for learning to ski for children?
Sure, yeah. So I mean, we do, across all of our uses, you know, for Nordic and Alpine, it's kids under the age of six ski for free, as free equipment, too. So if anyone, like, it's a perfect level to try it out. Just go to the Welcome Center Yurt, which is that, you know, the small round building there. We've got equipment they can try out. We also have snowshoes that are free for community use, so it's not just, you know, in addition to these paid, you know, fee schedule, like, we still offer that opportunity for people to get out, you know, no cost, and try it out, and we have a full range of snowshoes, you know, for adults and kids there. Yeah, there's, there's a whole bunch of programs and events that, you know, I could go on for a couple minutes, but just check it out on the website, I guess.
Sure, okay. So I'm just, I guess this is the, this is the price of admission, so to speak.
Correct.
Learning to ski?
Yes.
You mentioned it was a volunteer for, for...
For the Learn to Downhill Ski Snowboard Program, yeah. All of our programs are volunteer-led.
Okay, and for Nordic?
Yeah, same deal, yeah.
Same, same thing?
And Waterville Parks and Rec offers scholarships for those programs, so that...
Okay.
Yeah, and so we do, there's the opportunity to, you know, access, you know, have those programs be low to no cost and accessible for residents here, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
All right.
All right, Jeff, thank you very much. With that, all those in favor?
You love Quarry Road.
Absolutely.
Okay, moving on to Resolution 201, 2025.
Approve mutual aid agreement with the town of Winslow for EMS mutual aid.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
I have a number of questions.
Okay, great, let's just jump right into it. Chief.
Bottom line, is this going to cost the city any more money?
No, sir.
Can you explain how it will work?
Yeah, so right now, if Winslow has a call that they need a paramedic and they don't have one, or if they need a call for an ambulance and they don't have one, basically, they're just looking to be able to call us first. They don't have an MOU with anybody right now, so we'd be their first call. If we cannot provide services for them, we just decline, and they'll have to go on to the next one. If we send a paramedic over there for a paramedic intercept, we do charge $300 straight to Winslow, and then they pay us that. If we bring an ambulance over there because they don't have one available, we do charge the patient for the ambulance run, so we will get reimbursed regardless of what we do over there. But we are under no obligation to provide anything to them if we can.
I'm under the impression that you're very concerned about workload. Does this increase your workload any?
It shouldn't. We, they had 50 calls over there last year where they needed a paramedic intercept. We covered 37 of them anyways, but again, if we do not have an ambulance, we do not provide them with anything. ambulance, we do not provide them with anything.
Do they have any paramedics there?
They do. They have paramedics on staff. They're per diem. So they do have paramedics on staff. It's not a common occurrence, but it is, they really just need the ability to have somebody to call first and then know that if we can't provide, they can move on from there. But it also helps out the comm center, too, because they'll just call comm center and say, "We need a paramedic interceptor. We need an ambulance." And then comm center knows who to call first and then they know who to go to next after that if we can't provide anything for them.
Right, it essentially just sounds like it's gonna streamline the process, right? Like.
That is correct. We're doing it now anyways, and they also do it for us. If, so we have Delta as our first call. If Delta can't provide anything, the next call is just Winslow. And that, so we have that mutual aid also. They just don't have anything right now and they needed something. So they asked if we would be their first call and if we can, we will help them, and if we can't, then we won't. Well, what happens, say, for instance, you guys get a call to Winslow and Waterville gets a 911 call and, you know, you're, one of your trucks is busy and then the other one is in Winslow leaving Waterville, and then you call Delta. Delta's not available. And then, then what? Yeah, then we will, I mean, we will try to staff our third truck if possible. And that's, that's the game we play. I mean, we could have three calls in the city of Waterville and we would have to call someone to come over here also. There's no perfect system out there. We're just trying to help when we can. And really, this was just an opportunity to, we're already doing it anyways and it is nice to have an MOU in place. So if something happens, we do have something to fall back on. We just, you know how it works. We try the best to cover everything that we can. Of course.
Why wouldn't they have Delta as their first?
So Delta has notoriously been their first, and you would have to talk to Chief Murphy about this more, but 50 times last year, they called Delta for a paramedic intercept. 37 times, they were unable to cover them. 37 times, we did cover them. So they're just looking to streamline their process and just make us their first call, where we did a majority of them anyways. And again, if we can't, then they just move on to the next person.
Councilor Quebec.
From my perspective, this MOU beyond streamlining the process, I think this is an important symbolic step in the services, the emergency response services in the area, in the region, becoming more integrated and working together in a more efficient manner. So, yeah, I, to me, this makes eminent sense. It's not Waterville trying to in any way negatively impact Delta. It is Waterville helping our neighboring city in a mutual, in a mutual way. So from what I understand, this is a constructive step forward with the city of Winslow for Waterville.
Councilor Quebec?
Yeah, I mean, initially, that was my thought as well. Like, why wouldn't we just do this all the time? But then, isn't the net effect gonna be that Delta gets less calls?
They didn't cover 37 of them anyway, so I mean, they're, they were struggling to cover them. So really, it, I mean, they may pull the same amount of calls in Winslow, I do not know, because we may not be able to provide some of them either. But for Winslow, it was just the fact that they would just like to call us first to streamline the process since we did 37 of the calls out of 50.
But don't all the calls go through the comm center anyway? I mean, wouldn't they just go to whoever is available?
They go by the MOUs in their call list on who's next.
But why don't they just, I mean, why doesn't everyone have, why isn't there a common call list where, you know, the?
Every, so every department has their own, we run this way, Winslow runs that way, Fairfield runs this way. Basically, Winslow had nothing up there, so they would have to ask for them and then they would say, okay, and the Delta doesn't have anything. Okay, who do you want next?
That just seems a little inefficient.
It is inefficient, that's correct. That's why they're trying to button it up right now.
Well, I mean, I just think overall, it would be a good thing to look at, you know, so that there is an equitable distribution of, of calls that are being taken, especially if they have to go to Augusta, then, then Delta should, should get that, that call.
So if I can, and again, if I'm, if I'm wrong, like, just tell me to, tell me to be quiet, but it sounds like, you know, I mean, even on the agenda today is, we're trying to, you know, pass something to assist the Waterville Fire Department in staffing. And it sounds like to me is that Waterville is subsidizing Winslow's EMS service. I mean, Waterville taxpayers are essentially fronting the bill for not only the 37 calls, but for other, for other mutual aid, leaving kind of Waterville in the lurch. Am I, am I, am I wrong in that assumption?
We get paid for those calls.
The thing is, being paid for a call and being, this isn't about making money. This isn't a Fortune 500. It's EMS service. So it's not like we're gonna make money. It's not about making money. It's about alleviating the tax burden of the Waterville residents. That is what it boils down to. And it sounds like Waterville is subsidizing Winslow's EMS. That's what it sounds like to me. If I'm wrong, cool. But I don't, I don't think I am. It, it sounds like that. I mean, I guess I look at it slightly different. I mean, because we call them to help us when we need help also. I mean, we're just trying to help each other and we have under no obligation to do anything for them. It's just really to button up their calls so that they know who to call first. If we don't have it, we don't send it. If we do send it, we do get reimbursed for it. I, we would never leave this, I mean, unless we blow up and we don't have ambulances, but I mean, if I have one ambulance sitting in my bay and they're calling for an ambulance and my battalion chief does not believe that's a good idea right now because the city is exploding around us, then we will not send it. It's numerous, numerous times that we just bring a paramedic over in a pickup truck and drop them off and they drive in with them and we get reimbursed 300 bucks for that. I mean, we would never intentionally leave the city uncovered. I can promise you that much. This is really to help button up, for Winslow, it's to help button up their calls and how they run them. And like I said, we, we did 37 of them last year. And without the MOU, there's a possibility we could do 37 of them again this year. I mean, just because if they call Delta and they don't have the ambulance, I mean, we're gonna help if we can. Not gonna leave somebody out there stranded if we don't have to. I mean, that's, and I, they would do the same for us if we needed them to come over here.
What's that ratio? Can you, do you know that reciprocity? How many times do they send the orange and black over here?
I would have to run the numbers. I don't have them in front of me, but I, you know, the numbers I've been giving you weekly, I mean, we, we, we get about half of it in return, I'd say. About half the time, we get that back.
One of the, I'm reluctant to vote on any of this stuff now. Part of it is because I don't understand it. My career was as an engineer and that was very important to solving problems, was to truly understand the situation. And this is a regional challenge, it seems. I heard from a citizen of the Waterville earlier today, and they had participated in a fire committee that was, and I think the mayor was involved with it years ago. As this is potentially, it seems to be a complex issue. Could we have some kind of short-term committee established, maybe three, four-month deadline to, to work with the fire, the leadership in the fire departments of all the surrounding cities and Delta, as well as community representatives to kind of, you know, look at the big picture of this thing?
Most definitely. I would be happy to sit on that. I mean, MOUs are, I have an MOU with every single department. In fact, we have an MOU with the state of Maine to provide services anywhere in the state of Maine. So it's not uncommon. I mean, I have an MOU with Scowwigan to provide if, coverage if they need it, and that we, and they provide it back to us. I mean, it's, it's a give and take type of thing and it really is a, we need to cover our butts type of thing. We gotta have something that says, "We can respond to your town and you can respond to ours." And that's really what this is. I have MOU, I have a book of MOUs for every, and we try to update them as regularly as we can, but it really is so that if we go to your town, you know, we're, we're covered and if you come to our town, you're covered also. With the $300, do we get paid without the MOU? I mean, how is it, how does it work now without the? We charge them right now, yes. Okay. And they charge us the same thing. Is it the 300 or is that just a number that? That, that is like, that's what Winslow does, that's what Delta does, that's what we do. That's, we all came to that number together.
Mayor? It should be noted that when Winslow calls for a paramedic intercept, that the dispatch contacts Delta. Delta has a certain amount of time to respond whether they can send an ambulance. So there's a delay, I don't know how many minutes it is, but it's.
Well, off the top of my head, I don't remember.
But it's a certain amount of time, so they're waiting for the intercept. And then if they say, "No, we can't," then they call for Waterville. This will just allow the first call to save time will go directly to Waterville Fire Department. And if they can intercept, they will, and if they can't, they'll go to the next, next one.
That is correct.
Well, I guess, so I'm still struggling with the ambulance thing because you just said it now, like you said, like this is a paramedic intercept, so this is just a person. They need, they need the skill of the person?
Sometimes, yes.
To be there, like, so it's not, I'm trying to understand why either entity would need to send an ambulance for a paramedic intercept.
We wouldn't, well, if it's just a paramedic intercept, we normally do not send an ambulance. There's no need for it. We'll send a paramedic. If they need an ambulance because they don't have an ambulance available, then we'll send an ambulance to run the call for them. And that's when we charge the patient. But if it is a paramedic intercept, that would mean that they don't have a paramedic on their rig. So if they need an EKG red or if it's something that requires a paramedic level, then we will send just a paramedic. And a lot of times, we take that over in a pickup truck and we bring them over, we drop them off, they ride in with Winslow and then they drop them off at the fire station when they're done.
During the coverage that we had for Winslow last year, how many of those were paramedics versus a full ambulance?
That 50 that I talked about was 50 paramedic intercepts. Yep, and 37 times, that's what we did. Yep.
So that was only the paramedic going over there?
That is correct.
In addition to the fifth, so out of, out of, in addition to the 37, how many ambulances went over to provide coverage for?
I would have to pull that information, how, how many ambulances we sent over.
Well, that's kind of the critical question, isn't it?
Correct.
I mean, if we need to staff a third ambulance, let's find out how many times that ambulance is going out. In your report, you did mention that last, the timeframe, between the timeframe of 5/19 and 9/29 this year, Waterville received 21 mutual aid calls, but gave 30. So Waterville is responding more times, like quite substantially more already, to other surrounding towns. And so I, you know, I, I love the idea of mutual aid. I think it's important, but it just seems that it's not equitable, especially if some towns don't have an ambulance.
I mean, so I got my question for you, and this is a real question. If we don't sign this MOU, do you not want me to help them?
Absolutely not, but you say you're helping them anyway. I mean, you are helping them now. It, it, the only, it seems like, the only change, it seems like the only change the MOU is going to affect is that they'll go to you first.
That is correct.
Right.
Yep.
So, but that, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't, that means you're gonna get more calls than you are, than you have now?
I mean, if, let's say it was 50, we'd get 50 of them and we would respond to what we can.
Yeah, but then if, then if you get another call from Waterville, your, your rig is out.
Does this not also cause impact to Delta, however? I know that we've had concerns about the fact that Delta's been losing business because of other ambulance services and things like that. If we're saying, "Okay, Delta, you're no longer the first call for Winslow," it's gonna be Waterville instead. They didn't cover very many last year, admittedly.
They did not.
But that's still a portion that's no longer going there. That's a revenue stream for Delta that's no longer going to be consistent for them and might have longer-term impacts for Delta. I don't know what the total Delta coverage for Winslow is, but, you know, they have a relationship with Winslow and doing this is potentially money lost for them.
I don't, I don't know how much I'd.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's true. The ratio of 5 to 30 that you're pointing out, so the 21 calls that we placed and five of them came in for us versus the 30 that we rendered, that's a six-to-one ratio. And so that can seem like a significant asymmetry, but these numbers are miniscule. They are, they are noise in the baseline of the overall call volume that Waterville is feeling. And, you know, if you're worried about us subsidizing our neighbor Winslow, right, when you're talking about a tenth of a percent of our volume, less than a tenth of a percent of our call volume, I think that's, I think that's short-sighted. The things that we're actually able to gain by stepping forward in, in mutualism with our neighbor, ultimately, whatever comes to the city here, whatever comes to the region, we're not there yet and I'm not gonna be the one that makes it happen, but it seems that some kind of regionalization has to happen. And there's a lot of dominos, a lot of pieces that gotta fit into place before that happens, and we're not anywhere near that yet. But it seems to me that a step towards working with our, our neighboring communities so that we have a more integrated, coherent emergency response covering all these communities makes sense. It far outweighs concerns about us supposedly subsidizing our neighbors when we are getting paid something for the service, first of all, and it is a tiny fraction of, what is it, over 5,200 calls a year that the, that Waterville is running? And this is, this is like insignificant numbers compared to that.
I thought it was 1,500.
What are the numbers?
How many ambulance calls?
Yeah.
We run over anywhere from 4,600 to 4,700 EMS calls a year.
That's right.
5,700 total, fire and EMS.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I got that number wrong. The ambulance runs are 2,300 a year.
Per ambulance.
Well, it, it says each ambulance is currently averaging around 2,300.
Per an ambulance, right, so 4,600.
Okay, so you're saying the total. Gotcha. Okay.
Yeah, so it's around 5K. There's noise up and down, but, you know, five runs versus 30 runs, these are, these are insignificant in, they're in the noise in the baseline of the overall call, call volume that the, that the city's feeling.
I guess that this, the other piece that I'm struggling with is that according to this report, Winslow only has about half the calls per ambulance. How is that, that they would be then calling us?
But they only have one ambulance.
Yeah, but this is.
And they do not have a paramedic on every day.
So each ambulance is currently averaging around 2,300 calls a year. And Winslow is averaging 1,100 per ambulance. So.
They have one ambulance.
Yeah.
They only run about 1,500 calls a year total.
Okay, but, but each ambulance, each of your ambulances, ours, are running 2,300 calls?
That is correct.
Compared to, that's one ambulance.
Each ambulance runs about 2,300 calls a year, correct?
So one is 2,300 in Waterville and the one is 1,100 in Winslow.
That is correct.
And what am I missing?
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Since we have two ambulances, one ambulance can support another ambulance when there's a stacked call. Winslow can't support itself when, when they have stacked calls. Of those 2,300 calls, they're not calls that are 2,300 on one ambulance and 2,300 on the other ambulance. They overlap. 35% of the calls are stacked coming out of Waterville. Winslow can't do that. And so of course, they have a lower volume, but they have a significantly lower capacity to back themselves up when they have whatever would be a 35%, 35% demand upon double calls or whatever it is.
And they also, they don't have a medic, I mean, they try to have a medic on every single day, but sometimes it just doesn't happen because they, it is a per diem service. Their medics are anyways.
I'm, I'm sorry. I just, this just doesn't seem like an. I'm, I'm sorry, I just, this just doesn't seem like an efficient way to deliver emergency services. You know, we have a regional population of 36,000 people, I mean, we should be looking at that region, that's who, what we're, you know, what we're dealing with, we're, we're giving mutual aid to each other, and two towns don't have an ambulance. So I, I think we need to take another look at this. Can I say something? I'm like, let's look at the number, let's look at the number of calls total, and, and figure out how we can divide them equitably between the ambulances we have in the region.
Counselor Harrod.
I think the item on the agenda is an MOU. I think we're getting off track with mutual aid. That's a broader discussion, certainly we maybe should have that in the future, because it obviously is impacting the city, but tonight on the agenda, it's an MOU that the chief even sounds like thinks is a good idea, so I guess I just don't know why we're going so far off the rails right now.
Well, I, I would say it's because it's, it's one piece of a very, of a larger puzzle. And, and I think we need to look at the, the whole puzzle and not just fit one piece here and one piece there.
And I, I don't, I don't disagree with you, counselor, but regionalization is not happening tonight, tomorrow, this year, next year. There's not enough pieces in the puzzle to regionalize our entire region right now. The MOU is really just to help them out and to have help for us. If I need help, I need to be able to call somebody also, and it may be Winslow, it could be Delta, it could be whoever, but there are times when we need help. All week long this week, I've been down to two ambulances, and we've called a lot of help into the city, and they just come do it. And I want to be able to return that when they ask us for help. It's a give and take type of thing, we help each other out, we do the best that we can, and that's really all this is, is to help Winslow out when they need help, if we can. It's, it's, it's nothing more than that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I do understand that. I, I think the big change is that it, it's just the sequence of who gets asked first. So, this isn't my biggest concern, believe me.
I would just add, we did request mutual aid 21 times. So if we don't wanna be part of the region where we have mutual aid, are they gonna say?
I'm not suggesting that, no. And perhaps I don't understand, but my understanding is that we already provide that mutual aid anyway. That is what's happening now.
And this MOU just buttons that up, though.
Yeah, okay.
But I mean, I guess my, I guess to ask a question, right? So we're currently struggling, or we're, we're having an issue with, with staffing and whatnot, and, you know, that'll come up later in this agenda, but to be considered first, I mean, I guess I'm trying to understand, if we're having issues handling our volume to make ourselves, to put ourselves in a position to be the first call, I, I don't know if that's the, like, I'm okay if you wanna do a second call, and then make them call Delta first, like, why are we the, like, why do we, why are we the first call?
Because we provide a good service, and they want it as quick as possible. And I totally understand that, and if I was their chief, I would ask the same thing.
I mean, in real terms, we're rendering the service anyways. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, exactly.
We're rendering that service, and so, as our manager pointed out, since we're rendering the service anyways, why don't we streamline it so that those real people who are getting the service anyways from us are going to get it a couple minutes faster, right? Which can, I don't know if he has the statistics on how many, you know, return of spontaneous circulation, or, you know, whatever type of cases they are, but there are a lot of times when a couple minutes is the difference between life and death for an individual. So it seems, why don't we make it a little bit more efficient? If Waterville doesn't have, you, you heard the chief, if we, if he doesn't have the resource, he's not sending it. Or if he deems that he doesn't, discretionary, if he doesn't wanna send it, he's not gonna send it. But if we have that resource, and it's gonna come to us anyways, rather than buy the slowboat, why don't we make it more efficient?
Can I talk?
You certainly can.
Ooh. I think that this idea is a really good idea, because it seems like, from what I've been hearing, we already do this, so it's just, it's just like giving it a title, so I'm not sure why we'd ever wanna like, say no to this, we already do it. That's just like something I saw. If I, I could be wrong, but it seems like we already, we already are giving Winslow the service, so why wouldn't, and it seems like Delta already like, is hanging up like a lot of percent of the time, so we're already like one of their first people, so why wouldn't we just be first up there?
Any further discussion?
Thank you. It's my name too, so I thought you asked me, sorry. Anyone, I'm sorry, anyone in the public, anyone online wish to?
No, sir.
Any comments? Okay. With that, I will entertain a, all those in favor?
Counselor Green, are you, is your hand raised or not?
No.
So it's DeBrito, Green, Prigbaum, and Harrod are yes, is that correct? And Klepek, thank you.
Chief, and so, can you get me a number?
Yeah, could we? Mayor, before you go on, the, who is what proposed, was it Counselor Gilli? And Counselor Beal?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. So 37 intercepts, can you get me the number of how many times ambulance went over there?
Yes, sir.
Please.
I can make that happen. Sir, also, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill Lee on this MOU did want us to remove Cornell's name and the name of Steve Susie, just because. Just managers.
We'll just make manager instead of.
Yeah, but I think we need to make an amendment for that, because it is in there as a.
Okay.
So I apologize.
I just thought of it, I'm sorry.
No, you're right, I had that, I had a note.
Okay, so we need to reconsider this item.
Correct, please, thank you.
Motion to reconsider.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, wonderful.
Motion to amend as suggested.
Second.
Correct, so we wanna just take out, in the number 10, I think it's numbered, both on the, I don't think we needed the sig, not the executions piece, right? It's just in the number 10, to, basically, the town manager of Winslow and the town manager of Waterville, versus taking out, taking out the names.
That is correct.
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the amendment?
Are all in favor? Yes.
And move as amended?
Yep, I need a motion.
All those in favor?
Move as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
So is everyone now voting in favor of this item as amended? Because I wanna be clear.
The, the, the language must have hung them up.
I'm voting in favor of the language change, I'm not voting.
But you did already, yeah.
You already used that, so now we're voting on adopting the item as amended.
Oh.
So I wanna be clear on what the vote on.
I would like to vote no on that.
Okay.
I'm with Scott.
And you as well? Okay, so Counselor Gilli and Counselor Beal are no, and then the remaining counselors are still yes? Is that correct? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to Resolution 202, 2025.
Approved bid award to Autotronics LLC for an ambulance remount.
Move to adopt.
Is there a second? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Should we amend this before we discuss, so we know what we're discussing? Or do we wanna discuss this and then amend it?
I think, I, I think we discuss it, and then you'll move to approve by substitution.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions, comments?
Well, do you want a quick review?
Sure.
I can give you some background on this week. So, as you all know, we have, we have four ambulances. We have been down to three of them, because one of them, you, you folks approved last year to go out and get remounted, so that truck is up in Bangor being remounted right now. We will see that truck sometime in February, hopefully, all remounted. We were also awarded another remount from TIF funds this year, in the tune of $256,000, so we went out to bid for another remount. So right now, I'm at three ambulances. But this week, this last week, excuse me, we had some electrical issues with one of our ambulances, which is our frontline ambulance, was brought down to O'Connor's, they tried to fix it and said, this is above us, which I was really, really scared when O'Connor said, this is above us. So then it had to be towed to Autotronics in Bangor, which has now left us with just two ambulances as of this week. Last Friday, Autotronics called our maintenance overseer and said, this is, it's a big problem, and we don't know what's wrong with it. The truck will not run anymore, it's sitting up there completely dead. We talked about this Saturday, and then Monday, I decided to call Autotronics, see where we were at. Autotronics said that this truck that we are trying to fix, of course, this is a 2011, which we bought in 2019 for the tune of $55,000. It's got 130-some-1,000 miles on it now. Basically, he said that the last time they had, the codes being thrown in a truck, very similar to this one, it costs over $40,000, and they, the chief at that point in time said, enough. They never fixed the truck, and they spent 40 grand on it. So he's telling us right now that this truck could cost anywhere from 4 to $40,000 to get back on the road. Now, this is the truck that we're supposed to be remounting, so I'd like to not put a lot of money into it, because in a year's time, it's not gonna even be alive anymore, it's gonna be gone down the road. But the problem is, I'm down to two trucks. Now luckily, Autotronics has treated us extremely well over the, over the years, especially since I've been here, and he had a good working relationship with Sean, Chief Essler. He did give us a loaner to take home with us, which is kind of a big deal, so we're now back to three ambulances. But I asked them to stop work on that truck, I didn't want them to put another dime in it right now, I did not believe this was fiscally responsible to keep, to keep working on those trucks. So when we went out to bid, one bidder came back, and that was Autotronics. He came back with three bids, which is exactly what he did last time. He came back with a bid to remount our ambulance, he came back with a bid to remount an ambulance that he's, that has up there, which is the Braun XL, and then he came back with a bid on a brand-new ambulance, which is exactly like the one that we received.
Last year.
Last year, except it's a 2025. So we pumped the brakes, I came and talked to Cornell, who by the way, has been an extreme help, and I don't know what it's gonna cost to fix 59, but I do not believe that it makes any sense to try to fix that truck any further, especially where, in a, in less than a year, it's gonna be remounted, and we should see it back in 14 months as a different truck, it just doesn't make a lot of sense. So a brand spanking new truck is $305,000, which is crazy to me, but that's where we live nowadays. I, I talked to him up, when we were up there the other day, he did show us the truck, it's exactly like the one we have now. We did talk about no lettering, no nothing, I just need an ambulance. He was able to get it down to $291,800, and basically, he would have that truck delivered in two to three weeks to us. Once we got it here, we would use our graphic guy that we use to letter our vehicles, and we would have him letter the vehicle, at a pretty big cost savings. And we would just letter it so we could get it on the road and get that ambulance up and running, because we do need three ambulances at all times. Even though we don't staff it, it's on the road a lot. So if you take the 256,000, Cornell also said that we had about 10 grand we could use from the TIF account, and then the other 25,800 would come from our cost recovery account. That would get us a brand-new ambulance in the city of Waterville. That would basically give us a 2023?
23? 24.
2,000, it's a 2023, a 2025, and then we would have, still have our remounted ambulance that will be coming in February. So we basically, at that point in time, would have three brand-new ambulances. I do believe it is, makes more fiscal sense to do this than it does to, to try to fix that truck at an unknown cost, and then get rid of it to remount it anyways. Does everybody understand what I mean when I say remount?
Counselor Green?
Can I just recap what you just said?
Yes. I know it's a lot, I'm sorry, because it's not what we started with, and I apologize.
So, so you're proposing, instead of doing a remount and fixing a truck which is broken? Thank you. Instead of doing a remount and, and fixing a, a truck which, at an unknown cost, you're proposing to get a new ambulance with the additional funding that you?
And he will give us 10,000 for that truck.
So it, right, okay. Okay, yeah, makes sense?
What year is the Braun?
2010.
2010, okay.
And, and the remount that is going to happen is, that's the Osage, the 2011?
No, that, actually, we have a truck up there right now that is in the process of being remounted. Yes, that was from last year.
Okay.
Well, option one is the, so is this Osage for 258, that was the truck that we were gonna send up there?
Yeah, that's the truck that's dead up there right now, yes.
That's the dead one, okay.
Yeah. That is our truck, and then option two was the chief, the Braun chief. Basically, our truck would still go up there, and, but he would keep our, we would keep our truck in service until he decides he's done with it, then we'd trade it in. That was option number two. But that truck is the one that's dead right now, and I, I just, I don't know what it's gonna cost to fix it, I wish I did.
So when I look at option three, which is the one we're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
You have a total of 305.
That is correct.
But you just said it's 291,800?
Yes, that is correct. We, it was $6,000 for graphics, $5,000 to paint the top, like, the color scheme that we have now, and $2,000 to paint the rim, so I cut all that out. We believe we can do that way cheaper, and really, to be honest with you, I just, we need, we need an ambulance in the city that is gonna run and run good. We have been nickel and diming this, this ambulance to death. Jason Jola ran some amazing statistics today, even, stuff that I really wasn't even sure about, but again, we paid $55,000 for that truck in 2019, we've been using it ever since. That truck this year, so a, a ambulance, depending on which study you look at, but there's a study that got put into the main, the Blue Ribbon Commission that was passed by the state. In that study, there was a, a lady from Northern Light who did a study on ambulances and what it should cost to run an ambulance, and that is fuel, that is upkeep, that's maintenance, that's parts, that's everything, right? That study says that an ambulance, the standard, should be about 13 cents per mile, so every mile you run the truck, it should cost about 13 cents to keep it on the road. This fiscal year, or this year, 59 has cost us 54 cents per mile, and that's without any fuel. I just didn't have the time today to figure out how much fuel we put in that truck this year, that is just literally maintenance cost. So we're almost five times what the, what that study said for the Blue Ribbon Commission in 2021, 2022 area. I'm sure that that has gone up now, because obviously inflation and everything else, but if you look at that study, that's what it cost us to run that truck this year. It's been a good truck, I, I think we've gotten our monies out of it for sure, for $55,000. I, I think we've gotten our monies out of it for sure, for $55,000. I think it was a good purchase, but I do think that it is, it is definitely showing its wear.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Before we, so.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Amend by substitution with the struck-out language reflecting the information that the chief just said. I'm happy to read it if you need me to or want me to.
Would you mind, please?
Okay, so that the city awards a bid to Autotronics LLC of Bangor, Maine, in the amount of, and we would strike out 256,700 and add 291,804, and strike out an ambulance remount, and add a 2025 Ford E450 Demers MX170 ambulance. And then be it further resolved, I'm going to skip down a couple of paragraphs to the next section that struck, that the funding would come from the approved capital budget line for an ambulance strikeout remount in the amount of $256,000, and then add $10,000 from the downtown TIF, and $25,800 from the fire department cost recovery account, and then strike out, and the additional amount of $700 will come from the EMS vehicle maintenance line.
Yes.
Is there a motion to amend?
Can, can I just ask a question before we go and do that? Because in this resolution, it says 2025, but in the memo on the 21st, it says, new ambulance 2024 E450 Demers. Can we get a clarification as to what year this is?
It's a 2025. I apologize for that.
So the 2025 is correct?
That is correct.
Awesome. Thank you, chief.
That's my, I apologize.
No, that's fine. I just want to make sure we don't have to go and do something different later. Okay, so we need to vote on the amendment.
So we need to mo, motion to amend by substitution.
Right.
So moved.
Second.
And then we move as amended?
Now we vote on that amended version, whether, whether we agree on those amendments.
Move as amended?
It's already on the floor, so.
Oh, great.
It would be a vote on, on whether you're in favor of the amended version.
Correct.
To, to adopt, put, put that on the floor.
All those in favor?
Okay.
All right.
And now we move it as amended.
So move to adopt as amended.
Correct. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. So now this is the version on the floor, the amended version, so now we can discuss or vote, or, what's your pleasure?
Yeah, let's vote on that, then. All those in favor? Wonderful. All right.
Thank you very much.
A little bit, we got there. Thank you.
I apologize for all of that.
No, you're fine. All right, moving on to resolution 20, 203, 2025.
Approved use of funds from administration capital account to LED lighting project, city hall, and police department.
Move to adopt.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor? Thank you. Okay, resolution 204, 2025.
Approved the real allocation of funds from administration to the fire budget to hire additional fire slash EMS personnel.
Move to adopt.
Anyone want to start us off? Let me see, we just go to a vote, I mean, it's fine with me.
Well, we can. I mean, I guess, I'll just say, I, I'm not, I can't vote for this. I'd like to, but I think it's premature. We haven't seen what next year's budget looks like. I did request that we get that information about what our obligations are for existing salaries and everything we know that we absolutely have to, to fund before we fund something that will be, again, compounding next year. And my no vote is a yes vote for going back to the table and looking at this again, because I think we absolutely just have to. We need to be more innovative about how we are delivering services in this area, and we have to overlook whatever boundaries we have or traditions we have between towns, and think about the sustainability of delivering this service to people so that they get to the hospital safely, and it's not about money, and it's not about which department is better than the other, it's about delivering this very important service. And I think a big part of it is also advocating at the state and, and federal level to support our medical, our healthcare system, which is crumbling due to underfunding of Medicare, and that's, that's the bigger picture, which we can't control. But we should at least be looking at how we can be more efficient in this four-town area and work with our partner, Delta.
Excellent. Counsel, deep back.
Chief Beck, last budget season, when we were considering a third ambulance, there was, there were predictions based upon current volumes and the distribution between outpatient and inpatient care, the number of, the number of EMS calls that we're going to have to go to Augusta or to Skowhegan, adding 70, 75-minute turnaround time on top of the 35% stacked. And at, at that time, I, I was pretty compelled by those projections with a desire to make sure that we were able to, you know, we're not going to, we weren't going to maintain the, the, the kind of incredible statistics that the department had been delivering for years, given our privilege of having the medical facilities here in the town, but to, to try to offer at least a, a reasonable, you know, not have a cataclysmic. And then my, my colleagues here prudently, wisely, wanted more data. They wanted to see how time bore those projections out. You have provided the council with a brief with some numeric data that has been called over the last six months since those deliberations. Would you please review those numbers for us, and in particular, highlight both the ways in which that data either has supported the predictions of that time or not borne out those predictions?
I think, obviously, one of the big, big-ticket items that we talked about was our call increase to Augusta. It has dramatically increased. Fortunately for us, we're not seeing the numbers we thought we were going to see. We're averaging about eight calls a week to Augusta, average out over, over the course of the year. So from January 1st to September 30th, we made 183 trips to Augusta, but 135 of those 183 trips were done from May 1st to September 30th. So you can see that since the hospital closure, there is obviously quite an increase. So we expect to see, again, last year, when we ran these numbers, we did 112, 112 calls to Augusta, so obviously, there's going to be a large increase. And a big portion of our call volume to Augusta, when we looked at it last year, happened in the winter months, when people are just sicker. So what is that going to look like over the next couple of months? Will it increase? I, I think it will, but again, it's, it's one of those games we play where I'm just going by what I have for data in front of me from the last couple of years. That current average runtime to Augusta is one hour and seven minutes. That is, that's where the, that where we really are, are bothered right now. That's one hour and seven minutes if we do not need to have a drug box. If we use a drug box on the way to Augusta, when we get to Augusta, they will not refill our drug box for us. They said that they do not have the ability to do that, or the, or the staffing to do that. So if we go to Augusta, we, we bring a patient there, we open our drug box and we use it, that drug box now needs to be replaced, we have to travel back to there to, to get a new drug box. So now we're, we're, let's say, an hour and 45 minutes, at least before our truck is back in service, where, if we could just refill them in Augusta, the minute we left that, that parking lot, we'd be in service, and we could run from the interstate if we had to do a call. Right now that we just can't do that. And that is something that is out of our hands, that is something that Augusta has decided they cannot do. So there is a dramatic increase in calls to Augusta. This winter will show us a little bit more of what we're up against, but I expect us to be about four times more than what we've normally run to Augusta. From May 1st to September 29th, or September 30th, so 19 weeks, we had 348 stacked calls, that's 18 stacked calls a week. As we talked before, that's where we have two or more ambulance on the road at once. During that timeframe also, we put the third ambulance on the road 81 times. During that 81 times that third ambulance was on the road, 18 times of those, we had a truck in Augusta. So we were pulling staff off of their normal-duty fire engines, putting them in an ambulance to make sure that the city was covered. That's what we do to try to make sure that people are safe. During that time, though, we have zero fire coverage in the city of Waterville, which to me is very concerning. As the fire chief of the city, I want to make sure that we have adequate coverage, and we do not. Unfortunately, during those times, not only are the citizens unsafe, so are, are firefighters for the one or two that we could maybe get to see.
Well, I, I was just going to say, isn't that where mutual aid comes in?
It does.
I mean.
But mutual aid is, I don't know how long out. We average four minutes to every run in the city of Waterville. When we call a mutual aid, it's not going to be here in four minutes.
Okay, but, you know, it, it might be six, right?
It's, it, it will be longer than six, but yes.
Well.
Winslow's our closest town, and they got a, right now anyways, they can't even go across.
Okay, it was just, it was just a question. I mean, you say Waterville's not covered for fire, but, but we do, that's where we call on our robust mutual aid agreements, and that's why we're doing these.
So I would.
Right?
Just, yes, we do, but.
And if you're, if you disagree, that's fine. I just wanted to clarify.
So let me just, a little, so Winslow has three firefighters on during the day. So if they come to Waterville to cover a fire, they have three firefighters. We can't, we can't fight a structured fire with three firefighters, that's impossible. So if we don't have anybody, you know, we're relying on them to come over here. Right now, Fairfield has three firefighters on, so again, yes, fire doubles every minute, so just remember that if your house catches on fire, every minute, the fire will double. So every minute we're not there trying to put it out, the fire will double. So that's where the kind of staff lies, and I, and I understand what you're saying, I do, okay? So many times when we're putting the third ambulance on the road, we're trying to backfill the station, trying to get people to come in. In that timeframe, we put out over 60 driver stones. How many people are coming in for driver stones? It's, it's very sporadic. I mean, we're asking people to come in on their days off, you know, if people don't live in the town, it's, it's a long ride, so we try. So those are the, the real big numbers that we had discussed last time, right? So yes, there is an impact. Yes, it has changed what we're doing, and yes, the call volume where we're trying to get a third ambulance on the road is definitely there. But again, that, that is, that's hard to do sometimes with our staffing. Yes, sir?
I'm under, my understanding is that.
Microphone, counsel.
My understanding is that Medicare funds some EMS services in the state of Maine through insurance reimbursement and so on.
Yeah, every ambulance service, yep.
Okay. I'm going to read a couple paragraphs from an article that was in Channel 13 on the website. At least four companies that provide Medicare Advantage plans to older Mainers are cutting the options they offer in the state amid regional rollbacks and federal reductions to Medicare. Anthem and Aetna are scaling back in the state, spokespeople for the companies confirmed Wednesday. Martin's Point Health is discontinuing a plan, according to a letter to members obtained by the Bangor Daily News, and United Healthcare is cutting one of its own, the company said Tuesday. It is not clear yet how many Mainers will be affected, how many companies are reducing their offerings here overall, or if some counties will be more heavily affected than My unwillingness to support this proposal last summer was because of all the unknowns, and those unknowns are still here. My expectation, based on what I've read, is that we're going to see reductions in federal funds coming into the state that could be used to reimburse for EMS services. If that's the case, then the city's obligation is going to go up, is my expectation. So it seems to be still impractical for us to support this at this point, given all the unknowns with the, the funding going forward.
I don't disagree. I do not have any idea what's going to happen with the funding. What I can tell you is that the call volume is still going to exist, and it's not going away. If anything, if that's the case, you're right, healthcare is a mess, we're going to get busier, and that is my ultimate fear for our fire department. We are, and I've said this a million times, right, and I get taxes. Please don't think I don't, and when I talk about this stuff, I understand that. But when I tell you that we run, in 2023, when all the statistics come out, we ran 5,704 calls. South Portland ran 5,714. They have 71 full-time firefighters, they have three ambulances on the road with four hospitals that they can run to. I am half the size of that. I have 32 full-time firefighters, two ambulances, and one less hospital. So I understand what you're saying, I totally do, and that is one of our fears also. But at the end of the day, the call volume never goes away. We have to run the calls. So when somebody calls 911, we can't refuse that, we have to go. So the big issue that we have is staff burnout. I've had four staff leave since July 1st. I have done exit interviews, which we've never done before with those four staff. One of them walked out the door and said that the ambulance call volume is just too much. We had one young lady that she did move because that was her ultimate plan in the end, so, but she did say, you know, the call volume is a large. And the last two, I lost one to Augusta for the ultimate reason of the call volume is too much. They have four ambulances there, and the call volume spread amongst four ambulances, it's so much easier to handle. And the last one is going to Scarborough because Scarborough is putting on eight firefighters to staff a third ambulance, and they run less EMS calls than we do. So I understand the funding mechanisms. We, I, I look, believe me, I, I had it out on my desk today, looking at exactly how much revenue we're bringing in, but the call volume never goes away, and we are faced with that on a daily, daily basis, and that's, that's my biggest fear. That's where my frustration lies, is that every time I lose somebody, I have to hire somebody new, and that, you know, the one we lost to Augusta is a paramedic firefighter, those are hard to come by, I can't replace that, and when I do, I have to train them at a very steep cost, and also, we're just losing that ability to run calls in our city. We're bringing on new people, so, you know, right now, I'm training two new people to try to get them in place, but again, Portland's hiring because they want to reduce their call volume on each ambulance. Scarborough's hiring because they need to reduce their call volume on each ambulance. Augusta put on their fourth so they could reduce the call volume on their ambulance, and Auburn is also hiring right now to reduce the call volume on their ambulances because they want to put on a third ambulance. So I, it, it.
Chief, I, I, I feel your frustration, you know? This is a real problem.
It's a huge problem, I agree.
I don't think that the direction we're headed with increasing the property taxes, as much as we're going to have to, i, is, is sustainable. So we need a solution, but I don't think that the solution is, at this point in time, at. adding to the burden of taxpayers in the city.
If, if we voted to approve this today, what are the, and you get the four, it's, we allocated the $207,000, so that's, I guess my question is, is, is kind of twofold. So how long would it take to, to, to hire the four additional personnel? And then do you have an idea on what that would look like for next, for next budget season?
I do. How long would it take to hire four personnel? Well, got to put it out for a couple of weeks. My guess is, long story short, we wouldn't see these people probably coming to our department by the end of, end of December, 1st of January. By the time we onboard everybody. I can't onboard four people at once. I can only do a couple at a time. So, you know, right now, the last three we just hired, it took well over a month and a half to get all their workplace health stuff done, get them all up and running, get them even ready to start. They then, they then gave a two-week notice to their previous employer, which I highly recommend that they do anyways. And then at least a three-week training regimen to get them onboarded onto the fire department. So my guess is by the time this all happened, we would see them probably beginning, end of December, 1st of January, all four onboarded. Does that answer that question?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Counselor, okay. So Bobby Joe ran the numbers, what it would look like next year for those four. And mind you, when we built these, these four, I didn't really know where to stick them, so I stuck them as firefighter medics on step two. I highly doubt I'm going to hire four firefighter medics. That would be impressive if we did, but that's probably just not going to happen, right? But these are firefighter medics, so they're at a higher pay obviously on step two. Not saying we'd ever all hire all four people on step two, but we had to start somewhere. So if you take those firefighter medics for the 207,000 and you convert them into a full year, we're looking at a 274,984 dollar increase over the 207,000. So basically that's 481,984 dollars.
But that includes the 207,000, correct? Or no?
The difference would be an extra 274,984.
An addition to, right.
For next year's budget, correct?
Because the thing is, you know, I'm, I, I've been a no throughout this entire process. I think it's too expensive. I don't think that we should burden the hardworking taxpayers of Waterville. But on the opposite end, you know, I know how it works and I, and I understand struggle and burnout and things of that and that is an uphill battle.
Mm-hmm.
And obvious, retainment is always a, a challenge because it's not like any other occupation. We can just walk right in and start. It takes, you know, it takes time.
It does.
And it takes money. So I, I, I myself, Matt, one heck of a crossroads here because obviously you guys need, you need the help. We also have an obligation to try and save the city money. So yeah, this is a, this, this is a very difficult decision.
And I agree and I appreciate that, thank you.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So three firefighters in Winslow on a shift.
Mm-hmm.
Plus their EMS crew, whatever they have, or is that total like?
Three, three on shift.
So whether they're on ambulance or on the fire department, so, okay. And then three in Fairfield, Fairfield doesn't have any ambulances, but they do send people to calls to wait for Delta or?
That is correct. They run 18, about 1,800 calls a year.
Right. So.
And Scout Higgins runs about 1,400 calls a year and have three on shift also.
So I guess my question is, is that why in your opinion is that not a concern for any of these other municipalities?
I'm sure it is 100% a concern.
But I haven't heard any conversations, you know, I mean Winslow's here asking for mutual aid to help.
Mm-hmm. And Winslow's new city manager has said that they're looking to put the people that they got back in, onto their department. I think that'll bring them up to either four, I can't remember how they got rid of, how many they got rid of. It's either four or five per shift. Scout Higgins, and I, I talk to Chief Johnson on a regular basis.
Yeah.
They have three and they're looking to add a fourth next year per shift and they run four shifts like we do.
Yeah. I mean, I guess, you know, we're talking about adding staff. We're talking about, you know, assisting all of these other folks who are also, you know, not, I mean, they, three people on shift for both fire suppression and for EMS and we have, we have more than that, like.
Right, but they only do 1,200 calls a year. We do 5,700.
1,200 EMS calls?
1,200 EMS calls. So EMS, for EMS, and we run 4,600 EMS calls. They run 1,200 EMS calls.
Yeah, alright, okay.
So even if you tripled their call volume, it wouldn't come close to ours?
No, but it's, it, not necessarily the call volume, it's the, it's when the call comes in, right? Like, so if you're running 1,200 EMS calls, like when a fire call comes in, you have nobody in, that, you have one person in that house to run a fire. So, you know, 100% of the time, they're relying on, well, 90-plus percent of the time, they're going to be relying on mutual aid, you know, for.
You can say 100%, because even if we have no ambulance calls, we're calling mutual aid to help because we need.
Three people, right.
We need more than eight people to run a structured fire.
Right.
You know, like today we had a fire inside Hootamaki. We had Winslow coming. I mean, we threw a whole box out there. We had Fairfield on scene. I mean, you, you have to do that because, well, example is Sunday, we had a structured fire on the Ridge Road in Fairfield and I would say we had maybe 20 firefighters there. It was decently warm that day. We did, 20 firefighters is enough to, to strategically fight a firefighter in a two-story building, fight a fire in a two-story building. In fact, we had two, one went by ambulance to the hospital and the other one sat in the ambulance for quite a while, firefighter injuries, just because of overexertion, because we just don't have enough people. When we fight a fire, I don't want my folks to go through three or four SCBA bottles, but they have to because that's what we need to do to put the fire out. It's just not healthy for your body to do that. If anybody's ever strapped on their snowsuit and tried to breathe out of a bottle and go crawl around in a dark hallway that's, you know, 1,000 degrees, you shouldn't do that very often before you just should need to take a break. And unfortunately with, with the, the staffing of everybody, that's just not a feasible situation and we put people in situations they probably just really shouldn't be in. And why do we do that? Well, because if there's somebody in the building, we need to get them out. And that fire that we had in Fairfield, it was a fifth-generation farmhouse and just the pictures that we saved meant everything to that family. And if we can help them out, then we, then we will, right? So that was a, that was a rant and I'm sorry.
I, I'm in the same boat that everybody else is in here. This is, you know, we're, we're caught between a rock and a hard place. Personally, when I think about the notion of how we have a responsibility to the taxpayers of, of Waterville to represent them and make sure that their taxes are going towards services that are worth that investment in the town that they live in, it, it's hard for me to think about a service that's less fundamental than this one. The numbers that the chief is talking about, the, the volume of, of calls, that, you know, you're right, Scott, they're like, how do we pay for this? It's, it's a little bit unknown. What is not, what is not uncertain is that these, the call volume is going to at least maintain the, the level that we're at. It's not going to go down. And so I feel like Waterville, that the citizens of Waterville want someone there in their darkest hour, when an emergency strikes, whatever that emergency happens to be. You know, it, it's, it's easy to be, you know, talking about serving the constituents in general terms, right? When those constituents are not having a heart attack, when their wife isn't flatlined in their, in their house, when their child isn't, you know, didn't have some sort of emergency that needs direct intervention. Yeah, I don't, I don't, maybe I'm wrong for, for feeling this way, but my, throughout this entire process, the last year since we learned about inland, my instinct has always been towards delivering service and, and supporting the people that are delivering the most critical service in Waterville. I know that it is, it's scary as representatives of 2,200 people, right? 2,200 people that have real lives, real struggles, real financial burdens, you know, and God willing, most of them don't need to use the service that we're talking about here, but some of them do. And I'm, I'm quite certain that all of those constituents that, whose lives were saved by the, the Waterville EMS, whose partners, whose families, whose friends were saved by the, the services that these people are rendering, they are thankful that their tax dollars went to support this, this kind of a service. You know, I, I don't, I don't know what to say. Maybe I'm in the minority here and so my, and my words are lost and I'm certainly not going to be here next year during budget season and that, that's going to, so I, I'm able to dodge out of the responsibility of making those hard choices, but yeah, from where I'm sitting here and now, I hear what you're saying, Scott. I mean, you're right, you're right. The city's in good hands having somebody who's as concerned about that. But my, my, my gut, my reaction is to want to support this. It's, it's, it's not an easy, it's not an easy decision, but I, I just feel the, the imperative of the service that's being rendered.
I, you know, I agree with everything you said. I mean, how can one argue with that? But we are, we are facing not just this crisis, but a number of others. We had two poverty abatements on our agenda tonight. Fortunately, we didn't have to, you know, forego those taxes. We had another source of income, but this situation is just getting worse. And I think if I thought that for, adding four personnel to the fire department this year would solve the problem that we're facing, I, I might vote differently. Or if I thought that, that there would, there would somehow be a, a move to, to look at this problem more holistically, then I, I would be inclined to vote for it. But I don't think there is. I hear, well, we have a regional solution. It's Delta. That's not working. We have, we're, we're, we have inequitable, you know, resources. We, Waterville can't keep solving the problem by adding personnel. It's, we've already doubled, more than doubled, the number of, of people in the fire department since 2020. Like, how is that sustainable? So I'm just, you know, I, again, I'm, I'm also, I'm really struggling over this, but I don't think we've actually tried very hard to look at a bigger solution and I think we, I think we have to.
I just got one more thing to say. When, when I met with Bill Lee for the first time, he walked me through what it meant to be a city counselor and he warned me about situations that led to like three, four votes and four, three votes and that's not good. And the last time we went through this cycle, we came up with a, a way of pushing it down the road a little bit. I think this is a, a bigger regional issue. I think that we need to work with our neighbors to solve this. I don't know how to make that happen, but I would like to see some kind of pursuit of a regional initiative before I support any kind of additional funding for the EMS service.
Counselor, run.
Yeah, I mean, unlike Counselor Gilli, I've been a yes through this whole process. And while I appreciate the taxpayers, I absolutely do, I also appreciate that we need to provide them with this essential service and also a part of our responsibility I feel strongly about is that we can't ignore the folks who already work in our fire department. We, it's like we turn a blind eye and we accept them, we expect them to act like machines out there when they are tasked with taking care of us in our time of need. And, you know, at some point, we have to kind of look that straight in the face before something catastrophic happens in this city. And, and Counselor Klepak, earlier in the year, I believe, you laid it out for us so well with the actual, you know, if we were to look at budget lines, right, for this particular department and the actual tax impact. And I dare say, if our taxpayers looked at those line by line, they would probably say, wow, that's all I'm paying to have this essential service, to know they're going to come to my home and, you know, I, they can feel comfortable with that. And I really appreciated that when you did that. I don't know that it was a specific science, but you really broke it down and it was pretty eye-opening that, yeah, we look at the entire tax burden and it's a lot, but this piece of it for this department that we need essentially in this city is, to me, there's just no question. Like, yes, this is a hard decision, but it's also very easy because I know for my family, I want them to be able to come, whether it's, you know, an EMS emergency or a fire. We don't want to be the ones that if your, your house is on fire, you don't want to say, oh boy, I hope mutual aid shows up. I want to know that the fire department in Waterville can show up. Those are the ones that I'm depending on first and foremost.
Any other comments? Nancy?
Nancy Sanford, Ward 1. And I have been listening since the discussions last year as well and I'm not unsympathetic to the, you know, to the thought process of we, we need to be cognizant of how much taxes go up. And I also know that I'm fortunate to be able to afford that increase. However, I absolutely agree with Tom that we need to support this. I don't think the chief would be asking for, for more people if he didn't really believe that that's what we need. And so Brendan, my counselor, I would like to encourage you to vote yes. And I think the, the, absolutely, we need to look for regional solutions, but I don't think voting no for this certainly doesn't. think voting no for this certainly doesn't preclude that. And that if I need the ambulance, or if my house, which is on May Street, very close to my neighbors, goes up in flames or things started, I want people to be able to get there as fast as they can. And so I hope the vote will be in the affirmative.
Thank you. Patty, anyone on line?
I have, I have some comments to make on this.
Yes, sir.
Previously in this, I was going to vote no. I did lean in that favor previously, and even today, I was going to vote no. But part of what I've been reviewing and after listening to everybody here is the idea that we're here to be fiscally responsible for Waterville. That is true. But we're also here to represent what is the best interest of Waterville. And we have a population that is aging. We have a population that is in poverty. And that means we have to be balancing many different things. But at the end of the day, that means that a lot of our population is high-risk and likely needs the ambulance service. And then what Scott mentioned about the changes in Medicare coming down the pipeline, that means people are going to put off going to the doctors. They're going to, especially since inland's gone now anyway, people are putting off going to the doctor. People are waiting till the very, very last moment to seek assistance. And a lot of that time is through our ambulances. And because of that, that means that very likely, over the course of the next season of this, this winter, and also next year, if these Medicare cuts come down the pipeline and things like that, we're going to see likely a much higher risk group of individuals taking the EMS route. And those typically mean a lot longer call times. That means trips to Augusta. It means trips to Portland. It means trips potentially farther if, if Delta's not available to do a transport or things like that. We see, we were talking about, we don't have enough information to make these decisions. But we see the writing on the wall of what's potentially coming down the pipeline of these Medicare cuts. We know that rural health care is in decline. It's, it's having all these problems. Everyone's kind of struggling right now. We see the real impact of this on our constituents. Our at-risk groups are waiting longer to seek treatment. And that means that it is going to take longer. And if that's the case, that means that we need to have more ambulances available, or at least more staff available, to cover those longer calls. I don't foresee in any world currently where our call times decrease, we need less ambulance. This is, this, we see this trend. We know where it's going. We need extra information. We say that we do about the potential coming down the pipeline, but we know at least the trend of where this is going. And so I'm, I'll be honest, I've switched to saying yes on this because I think at the end of the day, even if it's not fiscally responsible, as some of the councillors may, may take this approach, it's still the service that we have to offer for Waterville.
I just want to say one more thing before, before this conversation's over. And that is that, you know, I, I don't think it's responsible to pick up the tab for the fact that we do not have adequate health care in our country. That we just, we have our government shut down right now, and it is largely over this issue. We should be on the phone, writing letters, urging our federal representatives to, to do something about this. You know, money is being taken away from this system. And, and, and we are feeling those effects. That doesn't mean that we should raise taxes in Waterville. Right? When we had a housing crisis, we didn't say, well, let's build more hous, let's, let's go into the housing business. I, I just think that it's, it's very short-sighted. We should be demanding more from our federal and state leaders to say, this is not sustainable for us.
I'll just, I'll echo, I mean, thank you for what everyone has said today. And I echo what, you know, Thomas Klepak had said, Councillor Klepak. And, and on the state level, we do, like, especially for me, I do acknowledge that everything that's going on, on the state level. And I did meet with chief, I did meet with the Speaker of the House yesterday. I did present the Treat in Place bill. It seems to have support. So we are doing stuff at the state level. There is bills at the federal level as well. The Treat in Place bill that I, that was modeled, is, there is another one on the federal level as well. So yes, I do agree with what you're saying, to reach out to our, our federal legislators and, in Congress, and really to push that, that the Treat in Place gets funded. And that, that moves forward because that would definitely help the EMS service. And also too, when we do have these things in Augusta, we don't see people go in and testify and really support the EMS service or support the municipalities. We're not having people go there and testify, testify on issues that is important like this. Like, we'll talk about this here, but when it comes down to the state level, we don't see the same effort of residents and people that really feel against the EMS at the state level saying all of these things. So like, for me, right now, I feel like at the state level, we are doing the best that we can. This issue of the federal level has nothing to do with us at the state level.
There are representatives.
I understand. We get funding from the federal level, but as at the state, we are doing the best that we can. And that's, I would just leave it at that. And we do have an emergency bill in right now.
Yes. And, and we, we do appreciate you working with us. I've never tried to put a bill into anywhere. I didn't even know how to start. Luckily, we have you here to help us do that. So I, I don't know where that's going to go, but, I mean, we are, we are definitely trying to make a difference in things that I never thought I would be talking about. So we're trying. I promise you, we're trying.
Of course.
So too, this issue with, that we're facing here is not just isolated to Waterville. It's across the nation. EMS service has, has a burden right now. It's the coding on, it's the way that they can't bill for treating. So even talking to my other peers, legislative peers, it's happening everywhere. So we are really coming together to, to see how can we solve this problem here in Maine. Not solve the problem because we can't, because it has to do with Medicare and Medicaid.
That's the problem. We can't solve it.
Yeah, because it's a bigger problem than that. But just here in the state of Maine, if we can pass the Treat in Place, that would be really big. I mean, like you said, we don't know where that's going to go, but if we have momentum and support behind it, that's great.
All right. With that, let's go to a vote. All those in favor? All right. Thank you very much.
What was the result of that?
Five, two.
Just Beal, and that's it? Who's opposed? Just Councillor Beal?
To oppose.
Is that correct?
There's two, right? Who, yeah.
Who else is opposed? I can't see.
Rebecca, you were opposed?
Oh, thank you, Councillor Green. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just have a real quick, I just want to say thank you for all of you to allow me to stand up here for countless hours and take up hours and hours of your time on numerous paces. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to Order 205, 2025.
Acceptance of a 2025 Firehouse Subs Public Safety Foundation grant.
Move to adopt.
Okay. Chief, what we got?
This is fun, right? Okay. So just last week, last session, I brought you guys up here because I had somebody that I wanted to introduce you to. So I'd like to do that again tonight before we kind of talk about this. This is Captain Alex Audet. Alex has been with us for four years. And so if his title doesn't tell you how, what he does for our department, it kind of says everything. He's, he's a captain at four years in a full-time fire department. That alone should be applauded. But a couple months ago, young Mr. Audet showed up in my office and, "Chief, we need a new set of Jaws." And I said, yeah, we do. But I don't know what to do about that because we're talking, you know, 30 grand for a set of tools, right? Captain Audet said, if you would allow me to, I would like to write a grant for the Jaws. And by jism, here we are tonight with a Firehouse Subs grant in the amount of $32,061 for a brand-new set of AMKIS battery-operated equipment. This will allow us to also keep our second set as a backup or a second one if we need it. But these are state-of-the-air, battery-operated hydraulic tools that otherwise we just would not be able to get. So first of all, I would like to say thank you, Alex. I think I spoke about it briefly last time, our, our motto, pride and duty, right? This is, this is, this is pride and duty. This is, I'm going to start crying, but this is pride and duty. I, I am so blessed to be part of this city. I am blessed to be part of this fire department. And I'm blessed to have employees like this that I know care about our department and our city enough to take the time out of his work schedule, not just his work schedule, but his personal life, to put these grants together, to come in and test these tools, and to put the amount of time in. He did. All the recognition goes to, to Captain Audet. I just wrote the memo and gave him a little bit of information that he needed. This is, this is all on him. So if you have any questions, you can definitely ask him. I'm sure he'd love to answer them.
I love that we're ending the night on, on this note. This makes me feel good. How did you identify the grant? How, where did you get struck by lightning?
So we got this grant twice before in the past. Chief Hamilton back there got it. Our Sea-Doo jet ski that we have is from this grant. So he helped me a lot, put it together. So that's where I found out about it.
Great. And, and how did you, out of, I imagine, I don't know all the details, but out of all of the possible things that you would need in your department, how were you able to prioritize this particular project?
Yeah. So I've used, I use these tools. I went to, when I was in college, I worked for another fire department. We had these tools. Right now, our tools require a decent setup time. You have to take a pump out. You have to hook hoses up to the tools. Where these new tools, they're ready to go. You open the compartment, you grab it, you start cutting, popping a door open, whatever. And it's, it's instant. There's no setup time where these incidents are, are very time-critical. So I think it's good to have a second set as well. So it comes with four batteries and charger as well.
Great.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm surprised you got that many words out of him. That's a lot.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Captain Audet, thank you. With that, I will take all those in favor. Wonderful. All right. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.